All right, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please note that all board members are present. Please note that all members of the board are present with the roll call. Item 2.2, if there are any conflicts of interest to report, please do so at this time. Hearing none, we'll move to item 2.3 if there is a motion to review and approve the agenda for this evening.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Laura.
Second.
And a second by Rossman. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to item 2.4 if there is a motion to approve the minutes from the December 9th board meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iverson.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions or comments there? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Turn it over to Heidi Yu to receive our financial report for December 2024.
Thank you. The general fund received the first substantial portion of the 2023 taxes payable in 2024 totaling $420,000. Additionally, the month's state aid payment was also received. Expenditures remained moderate resulting in an ending cash balance of $7.3 million in this fund comparable to the previous year's balance. Capital outlay consisted of revenue typical for December taxes in the amount of $219,000. Expenditures primarily covered construction in progress for the athletic complex leading to an ending cash balance of $1.7 million, which is lower than the previous year due to ongoing construction. Capital outlay certificate proceeds in the amount of $5 million designated to support the project are expected to be received in January. Special education revenue consists of the typical property taxes and a monthly state aid payment in the amount of $228,000. The cash balance in this fund is maintained over the prior year and is reported at just over $3 million. Revenue totaling $193,000 exceeded the expenditures for the month in the K-12 Nutrition Fund. The ending cash position reported at $175,000 is below the previous year due to equipment purchases in support of the program and lowered federal reimbursement rates. Lake Area Tech received revenue in support of the quarterly state aid payments and equipment grant reimbursements. Revenue totaled $7.1 million for the month and was above reported disbursements of $3.4 million. The ending cash position of $6.5 million in this fund is consistent with the previous year. In the employee benefit trust, premiums exceeded the administrative costs for the month and the ending fund balance within the trust is holding steady compared to the previous months. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
This is way off base, but with the new stadium opening up in the future and we'll have concessions over there, have we thought about food trucks or charging a food truck or expanding what variety is available over there for games? Something to think about.
Yeah, and that's a good question, Jean. I know like in the concept with the athletic complex, that was kind of noted in there. As far as the sales and what that would look like, we haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
But I think that would be something more like underneath the home grandstand. Once we made the revision to not have full concessions and restrooms under there, you might see something like that. And then maybe even possibly, you know, like this fall, we actually had concessions. We had a Coca-Cola let us use a trailer and that's what we had for concessions this fall for soccer and the lower level of football. So, you know, even something like that for the visitors so that it's not all funneled to the one spot.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll turn it over to Dr. Danison to help us with the student staff recognition.
All right, let's get this thing rolling here. We've got some students here to be recognized tonight. So when I call your name, if you could come up and then our board members will have a certificate for you. And when we have groups, I'm going to ask that the entire group get up so we can get a group shot as well as look into that camera right there so we can get you on the YouTube channel. So I've got state oral and TERP recognition tonight. Coaches Kareen Calamine and Chelsea Brink. Congratulations. A superior in poetry, Josie Althoff. Okay, we've got now a superior for the Z Team. And that is written by David Lechner. Come on up, David. You're here. And the Z Team consists of Josie Althoff, David Lechner, Silas Massar. Gah, man. Taren Keane, Olivia Strandle, and Tyson Camfield. Go ahead, slide down. We'll get the Z Team in there. Taren isn't calling. Kane. One out of three. Okay. Then, a superior with distinction in storytelling, Sunny Raider. A superior with distinction for a duo, David Lechner and Tyson Camfield. And just a note for the audience, a superior with distinction means that these individuals earned a perfect score from all three judges. Finally, we had a team excellence award. And for double A schools to earn a team excellence award, four or more competitors or groups need to earn a superior or a superior with distinction rating. So earning the team excellence award, Josie Althoff, David Lechner, Silas Massar, Taren Kane, Olivia Strandle, Tyson Camfield, Sunny Raider, Marley Greenfield, and Emily Calamine. Way to go, oral and TERP. Next, we have some volleyball award winners. Earning All-State Volleyball this year was Emery Thury. Don't go too far. Also earning Academic All-State this year, Emery Thury. Grace Corey, Emma Hendricks, Maddie Grimsrud, Natalie Pearson, Kinsley Johnson. And as a team, the volleyball team actually earned Team Academic All-State this year. So congratulations. All right, on to football. So we, because of the size of the team, we had a separate recognition ceremony. Thank you, John and Carrie, for joining us to hand out our awards to the state championship football team. So that group is recognized here. And then we also, thanks to me for handing out the certificates to the cheerleaders for that team. So we have them up there too, Casey? Perfect. So we had a couple of different award ceremonies, but because of the size of the team and size of this room, we held those at a different time. But congratulations to all of our participants on that state championship team. I also have some award winners here tonight from the football team. Earning All-State, Spencer Winches, Mitch Olson, Carter Engels, Jaden Lambert, Jeremiah Schulte, Micah Hock, and Kayden Decker. That's your All-State Football Players right there. Also earning Academic All-State this year, Spencer Winches, Mitch Olson, Carter Engels, Jaden Lambert, Jeremiah Schulte, Traitan Himrick, Riley Fisher, Nash Berg, Ethan Winches, Nathan Randall, and Hunter Nord. Congratulations. Sawyer Noff. Who did I miss?
Sawyer and Ethan.
I said Ethan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I distracted you for nothing. There you go.
Well, yeah, no. I even saw you sitting there the whole time, Sawyer. You're on my list. Now I'm on your list. And your mom's list. Nathan Randall, were you in there? Nathan wasn't here, okay.
Congrats, boys.
Congratulations. And we have All-State Orchestra we are recognizing tonight. Put on a great performance in conjunction with the All-State Chorus Concert this fall. Representing Watertown at All-State Orchestra are Sarah Lee and Axel Lickai. All right, congratulations to all our students tonight. Sorry, Mrs. Noff. We got him.
That's it, yeah. I can come up with some more if I need to.
All right, we'll move to item 3.1. If there's anyone here from the public to speak on an agenda or non-agenda items for the public. Seeing no one, we'll invite Mr. Vice President, Mr. Corey, thank you. We'll start with item 4.1 first now. 4.1.1 and resignations, please.
Yes, very, very good. Cam Corey, Vice President of Lake Area Tech, representing Tiffany as tonight for the board. We have three resignations for your consideration and we would ask that our recommendation is that you approve those resignations.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 4.1.2, the contract recommendations.
We have one addendum and that is Darrell Groze. Darrell was our precision machining instructor down in Springfield. We set up a class for precision machining at the South Dakota Men's Penitentiary down in Springfield. He was our instructor and he helped set up that program. We moved all of our equipment from the South Dakota Women's Penitentiary down to Springfield and we did have 11 graduates out of 12. So we're very happy with the success and really thank Darrell for his work. He did a fantastic job.
Is there a motion to approve as recommended?
So moved.
Motion by Rossman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Questions, comments?
How long a course is it? How many weeks, months?
It's a semester-long course. We did start about two weeks, maybe three weeks into the semester and then we had to catch up. They do have some general ads that they do through online and with our online instructors at Lake Area Tech as well.
Good, thanks.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's approved. Item 4.1.3, stipend requests.
We have four individuals looking to, for stipends as they are continuing in their education and we would ask for the board's recommendation to approve that.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve stipends.
Got a motion by Laura.
Second.
And a second by Rossman. Any questions, comments here?
What level of education is this? Bachelor's, master's, or something else?
Nope. So of the four there, three of them are seeking their masters. One of them is seeking their bachelor's degree.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Move to property, item 4.2.1 with the authority to bid the flatbed trailers.
We are requesting authority to bid up to two flatbed trailers for use in our corp ed program and this equipment is funded through the corp ed budget at approximately $90,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Iverson.
Second.
Second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. 4.2.2, we'll consider an office lease agreement, Manufacturing and Technology Solutions Center.
Thank you. We are recommending an approval of a lease at Southeast Technical College down in Sioux Falls for our manufacturing and technology solutions employee. And this will be a savings on an annual basis of approximately $42,000 in this lease. So we're really happy with this partnership with Southeast Tech.
Very nice. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the office lease as explained.
A motion by Moulton.
Second.
And a second by Iverson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to item 4.2.3 and consider another office lease agreement with the adult education and literacy.
This lease is for office space in the Brookings community. We are currently located in South Brookings and that lease has been on a month-to-month contingent and we are moving to the east side of Brookings in their industrial park. And the rate is for $775 per month and it includes about 660 square feet. And so we are recommending approval of that lease.
So moved.
We have a motion by Iverson.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's been approved as well. We will now move to item 4.2.4 and consider equipment lease agreements.
Thank you. And 4.2.4 includes six no-cost lease agreements for a variety of tractors and loaders. And this is in support of our diesel technology and the tech knowledge program. These leases are from Kibble Equipment here locally and we're asking for, or we're recommending that you approve these leases.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the lease agreements with Kibble as explained.
Second. A motion by Moulton and a second by Iverson. As always, thank you to Kibble, longtime loyal helper and supplier of these leases for the college. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's been approved. And we'll move to item 4.2.5 with consideration of a change order, number seven, the Archway Complex.
Thank you. To better serve the board in explanation here, Heidi is going to explain this change order.
Okay.
Yeah, so this proposed change order is one modification of the project and this is decreasing the contract by $74,627. The decrease is the cost associated with structural compliance and remedial work to the curtain walls and storefronts. The construction contingency was approved at just over a million dollars and the change order adjusts the remaining contingency to $877,847. The contract for the project is then adjusted to $20,687,811.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Iverson.
Second.
And a second by Moulton. Any questions, comments here? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That change order has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And move to item 5.1. If there's anyone here to speak from the public on agenda or non-agenda items for the district. Move to item 5.2, Northeast Tech High School report.
Yes, a reminder to those board members on that board, we will meet here, or meet, not here, meet on Wednesday, 5:45 over at the Northeast Building.
Perfect. At 5.3 with the budget calendar.
Yes, the proposed 25-26 budget calendar is provided for your review. The dates coincide with the dates of the prior year's budget development and the dates outlined in state statute. Please take note that May 1st of 2025 will be the date in which the board will meet in special session to review and discuss the proposed budgets of both K-12 and LETC. And we are looking to start that special board meeting at 5:00 PM on May 1st.
Got it. All right, we're going to go through the first reading of several policies here. We'll start with 5.4.1 with BA, please.
Yeah, just a reminder to the board and to the audience that we are embarking on kind of a full policy review through the use of the Associated School Board's sample policies. And so what we did was we started in the As and looked for any policy that had not been revised or reviewed since 2015 and then matched it up to what was in the sample policy from Associated School Boards and then presenting those changes. So you might see a variety as we go through. In this case, with BA, school board goals and objectives, you see that essentially we are striking our old policy and using the updated language completely from the sample policy from the Associated School Board. So that's what you see there. That's one thing that might happen and then we have a couple other examples here as we go through these four tonight.
So are we good on BA then?
Any comments? Okay. BAB is another thing that happened in that we had a current policy in our policy manual, which was school board authority and it was BAB. In the Associated School Board's sample, they had a board member authority policy, but not a school board authority. And so in this one, we kind of blended the two policies together. That's why you see school board slash board member authority. And then we updated some of the language and kept the last two paragraphs that were previously in place from ours. So that's another thing that happened out of this. BB, identical language, except we specified the length of our term for a school board member's term, which is three years. And then BBA, school board powers and duties. This was another where there was enough difference that we struck our policy and then used the updated language from the Associated School Boards. So a reminder, these are first readings, so when we do policy changes, we typically do a first and a second reading. After the first reading, then they are out on the website if there's public comment. And if the board has any suggestions, you know, we would take that into consideration before bringing it back for a second reading.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item 6.1 with the approval of the bills. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Questions or comments on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. We'll move to item 6.2 with personnel and start with retirements, please.
Thanks. Tonight, we do have two retirements for you, Kevin Conley and Julie Gerties. I would recommend those will be approved and thank you for their years of service to the Lawrence School District.
Is there a motion to approve the retirements?
So moved.
Motion by Rossman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Questions, comments? Thank you for the years of service as mentioned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.2.2 with the resignation, resignations.
One resignation. Julie Wolfe, we recommend the approval of that resignation.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the resignation.
A motion by Laura.
Second.
And a second by Rossman. Any questions or comments here? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's been approved. Item 6.2.3 with the contract recommendations.
A couple of hires here for some positions as well as lane changes for staff who have continued their education as well and would recommend these approvals.
Is there a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums?
What's the Lego League?
That's a club that's associated with our Gifted and Talented Program. It is a separate stipend for that because they do go to some competitions. C.C. Susie had retired, but had agreed to come back. This year, we were unable to find anyone to take on the Lego League, so she's going to come back and help us this year complete that. Hopefully I can find a replacement next year.
Sorry, you jumped in a little soon. What grade levels that?
It'd be four Gifted and Talented, so be like third grade through sixth grade.
Okay, thanks.
Through eighth. Through eighth grade.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations and addendums.
We got a motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to stipend requests.
Two, seven requests for some staff members that had completed coursework this last fall and recommend the approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Rossman.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or comments here? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stipends have been approved. We'll move to properties, 6.3.1 with the consideration Stipends have been approved. We'll move to property, 6.3.1 with the consideration Connect Teletherapy Contract.
Yes, it is recommended to approve the, um, contract with Connect Teletherapy to provide virtual certified occupational therapy assistant direct services for approximately 12 weeks at a rate, at a service fee of $80 per hour for OTA direct and indirect service and $100 per hour for OT direct and indirect service.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the teletherapy contract as explained.
Second, a motion by Molton and a second by Iverson. Heidi, have we done this before, or is this new, this online?
This is a new service.
Or virtual, I mean.
Yep, this is a new service for special education, and the 12 weeks coincides with the maternity leave that we have.
Cool. Very nice. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.3.2 will consider Aviana Contract.
Yes, the Aviana Contract is to provide one-on-one nurse, nurse services for approximately 12 weeks. Again, a maternity leave, at a service fee of $89 per hour.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson?
Second.
And a second by Molton. Any other questions, comments?
One comment I'll make about both of those is, you know, as we've gotten tighter with staffing, we maybe used to be able to cover some of those things in-house when we had an extended leave, and we could move people around to kind of fill in the gaps, and as that staffing and some of those specialty areas has gotten tighter, where we don't have as much, um, you know, lag in our ability to do that, that's why you're going to probably see more of this for some of those specialty areas, so. Because an IEP is a, you know, a contracted document. We need to provide those services so we can't use non-certified people or, you know, some of that, so. Probably a, a new trend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.3.3 will consider direct sales proposal with Johnson Controls.
Yes, it is recommended to approve the material-only contract to purchase two chillers engineered in size from Mallett in McKinley Elementary in accordance with Johnson Controls Sourcewell contract in the amount of $278,660. So this is directly related to the cooling project for, slated for next fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve the material contract with Johnson Controls as explained.
We have a motion by Molton?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We will now move to 6.3.4 with Consider School Bus, the Sourcewell Bill.
Yes, it is recommended to approve the 71-seated school bus from Harlow's utilizing Sourcewell contract in the amount of $142,030. This bus is outlined in the five-year capital outlay plan and is anticipated to be received in October of 2025. So again, this would be for next fiscal year's budget.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Iverson?
Second.
Second by Molton. Any questions here, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to item 6.4 with the authorization of the preschool fees for 2025.
It is recommended to charge $220 per month or $2,200 for the school year for the tuition-based preschool program at McKinley Early Childhood Center. It is also recommended to charge $30 per month or $300 for the school year for the option of the transportation accommodation add-on.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move we authorize the preschool fees as explained for 2025.
A motion by Molton?
Second.
Second by Iverson. Any questions or comments?
Maybe, uh, Mrs. Knopf, you want to know when preschool screening is?
Preschool screening will be March 17th and 18th to do for, for spring break at McKinley. There should be a, uh, registration will come out in the utility bill this coming month.
March 17th and 18th. Not able to hear that. Uh, at McKinley. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.5, authorized drivers, driver education fees for 2025.
Yes, it is recommended to charge $360 per student in 2025 for the driver's education program. This is a $5 or 1% increase from last year. The supporting documentation outlines the calculation verifying that charge. The Arrow Education Foundation has covered 75% of tuition costs for students that qualify for free and reduced meals, and in 2024, 39 students paid reduced fees.
So a big thank you to Arrow Ed.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the driver's ed fees for 2025.
We have a motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. We'll move to item 6.6 with the second reading of some of these policies, IIBFA.
Yes, that's the use of artificial intelligence technology. This was a new policy, and we have no updates or changes from the first reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Laura?
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. I, uh, policy, second reading, IKF.
Yep, this is our graduation requirement and early graduation policy. The biggest change there was to the, uh, credits. We added a required half credit in social studies due to the upcoming social studies standard changes. That would be for the incoming freshman class next year, and that takes away a half credit of electives.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion by Rossman?
Second.
And a second by Laura. Any questions, comments?
Yes. At this time, I think we have a few questions that need to be answered, particularly in line of social studies. So at this point, I'm going to vote no on this because I think there's some scheduling and decisions on social studies offerings, how many levels. Something changes to talk about yet.
The one, the one thing I would note to the board is you are simply approving the credit requirement, the number of credits. That does not necessarily, um, to the other discussion, that does not necessarily, um, establish the courses for that. It's simply, um, three-point, going from three to 3.5 credits of social studies, um, of which, because of the number of standards, that was the reason for the, um, request for the additional half credit. So the, the courses and, um, which, the course offerings and number of courses are not necessarily impacted there other than you need to make sure you have enough so that everybody could graduate with three and a half credits, so.
I realize that, but I still have some unanswered questions, particularly in light of the email I got at 11 o'clock last night entitled, "Social Studies Response," and I assume this is from the administration?
Yes, I sent that to the board.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Roll call, please, Mr. President.
All right, we've got a roll call vote. Start with Rossman.
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Stein, aye. Molton?
No.
Iverson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 4-1. Item 6.7, Consider School Voucher Resolution.
Yes, I, I gave everybody a copy of the, um, possible resolution on opposition to school voucher proposals. This year in the Governor's Budget Address, um, there was a request for an education savings account, uh, to be funded, which would take taxpayer money and, um, allow individuals to apply for money for private school tuition or for homeschooling supplies. And, um, our public school organizations and our public schools are opposing that, and I'm asking the board to consider a formal opposition to any school voucher proposals, whether they're called education savings accounts, actually called school vouchers, or any other name where it takes public funds and gives it to non-public school education.
Is there a motion to approve?
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Laura?
Second.
Second by Rossman. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Item 6.8 with the student, open and, uh, student enrollment request. We'll start with, uh, 8.1. Uh, we do have one open enrollment.
Yes, recommended for approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the open enrollment.
So, we have a motion by Laura.
Second.
And a second by Rossman. Any questions, comments here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved. Doesn't look like we have any 13, 20 attempts.
No 13, 20 attempts.
Turn it over to you, Dr. Danielson, with communications.
Yes, I've got a few reminders for everybody. Tomorrow, the legislative session does kick off. The State of the State is at 1 o'clock tomorrow. I think you can actually watch that on PBS. Um, if you are so inclined, it's streamed on SDPB. And then next week on Friday, or excuse me, next week, Monday, January 20th, we have no school for Martin Luther King Junior Day. The following Friday, January 24th, we have an early dismissal. That's 12:30, uh, and 12:20 at our K-4 sites, pre-K-4. And then we also, at that early dismissal, we will be announcing our classified and certified staff members of the year, so we're excited about that. And Friday's a big day, Friday the 24th, it's also Pizza Bash time. The Arrow Education is hosting their annual Pizza Bash in conjunction with a boys' and girls' basketball doubleheader, um, with Brookings. So that, I think that starts at 5:00 here in the lunchroom. So join us for there and help support Arrow Ed so they can help us pay for driver's ed.
31st, you said?
Uh, 24th.
I have the 34th.
Oh, sorry. Yep, yep, you're right. 31st is right, John. So the 24th isn't as big a day as I thought.
Pizza Bash is with the 31st.
Pizza Bash is on the 31st. Sorry to the group here. Yeah, good job. Good catch. I was just hoping for more pizza, 24th and 31st.
Can't go wrong with that.
Nope.
All right, uh, let's see if there's, uh, item 7.2, any board reports to the superintendent?
Mine was a small one we discussed, um, on Friday was to, and this is more for Mrs. Ballinger too. I was talking to others, I'm not Mrs. Ballinger. This is not my look at the wrong person. Mrs. Knopf, sorry, Ballinger. Um, I've just been talking to other parents, and I approved the calendar, so I'm just as guilty of people not knowing that the kindergarten building or, no, McKinley does not have school, the preschool through kindergarten that whole week of spring break. Um, so that could just be communicated more widely. I know it's in our calendar, but I talked to a lot of parents who did not know about that, so. Any extra reminders?
Right, so what she's referring to is, um, when we announce the preschool screening dates, that will take place at McKinley, so there will be no school at McKinley on those two days, so.
Yes.
It is the two days of spring break, which we already had Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off, so yes. Our preschool and kindergarten families will need to know that they get a week of spring break.
Find alternate.
And it's also kindergarten roundup as well for our incoming kindergarteners for this year.
Perfect.
All right, uh, with that, we are going to look to seek a motion to go into executive session for the superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Motion by Laura?
Second.
Second by John. We are in executive session.
Should be no action after this, guys.